We'll call the November meeting of the Anderson County Board of Education to order.
Salute to the flag. Legion salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We can honor Dr. Parrott now. You do this for everybody else. This is a resolution by the Anderson County Board of Education honoring Dr. Parrott and his staff members. Whereas our director of schools and his staff members work diligently to ensure our students grow and develop to their full potential and support any and all programs that make that happen. And whereas our director of schools and his staff members are intentional about making quality decisions about what is best for every student. And whereas Dr. Parrott ensures our schools operate effectively by creating appropriate budgets for our school system. And whereas Dr. Parrott ensures our schools are staffed with the best employees in the area. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Education officially recognizes the services of Dr. Tim Parrott and his staff to the students at community of Anderson County Schools. And be further resolved, Anderson County Schools extends appreciation to Dr. Parrott and his staff for their effort in enhancing the learning and working environments for every staff member and student in all our schools. Be further resolved, the Anderson County Board of Education hereby declares November the 17th, 2022, as Director of Schools Appreciation Day in Anderson County. Be further resolved, this resolution of appreciation for the Director of Schools be recorded and put in the minutes of the Board of Education on this seventh day of November, 2022. So, thank you for all these.
Thank you.
Now, we gotta put you to work.
Yes, yes.
Something good.
Something good. We're gonna talk just a little bit, Ms. Towes is gonna come and talk about the special ed diagnostic program. And then, after that, we will talk about Head Start. Okay?
So, I wanna spotlight a program that we started in 2017. It's called the Diagnostic Program. And I sort of brought this over from Knox County, but we put a little bit different twist in it. I wanted to bring it into our elementary schools instead of having it out in like a special day school or into a special alternative school. And so, what we've done is in 2017, I started it at Claxton Elementary School. And this program really focuses on our elementary students that are not successful in the regular program. So, they need some extra supports. So, we hire a staff and the staff we're gonna talk about today is our Grand Oak staff. But we started it at Claxton and it was really successful. And we take those students that are really at risk, that can't be successful in the classroom, that would possibly end up going to Clinch River Community School. And our goal is to keep them in their least restricted environment in the elementary schools. And so, we have staff that will go in and push in into the gen ed classroom and focus on what is it that's causing them to not be successful? Is it the academics? Is it their behavior? Is it social emotional? And do we need to reevaluate them or look at what's going on to prevent them from being successful? So, the program was really successful and we said, okay, we need it in another area of the county so that we're not transferring students from all over the district just to Claxton. So, we started another one at Grand Oaks. Then, in 2019, we brought on Fairview. And then, in 2020, we have another program at Lake City. So, we now have four diagnostic programs across the county. But last year, Jessica Duffel, who is our lead teacher at Grand Oaks, and Heather Carroll, she's one of the assistants at Grand Oaks. Every year, we have nominations from the Pilot Club in Anderson County that we can nominate three teachers in our district. We do an elementary, a middle and a high school special ed teacher to nominate for the Teacher of the Year from the Pilot Club. And so, those nominations go into the District of Anderson County. And last year, Jessica Duffel was chosen for the District Special Ed Teacher of the Year. And then, her nomination was sent to the state. And Jessica was chosen Teacher of the Year for the State of Tennessee for Anderson County Schools for the Pilot Club Teacher of the Year. And Jessica is just phenomenal. She works with all of Grand Oaks with regular ed and special ed. And she's probably worked with over 50 students since she's been here. We hired her in 2018. And she works not only with students at Grand Oaks, Dutch Valley, Norwood. She's worked with students that we've brought from Lake City, Briceville, different areas. But she also goes out to schools and she'll help teachers at those schools to transition students back from Grand Oaks to their base schools. But she'll also go out and support teachers at other schools to help with students that might have difficulties. Jessica, you wanna say something?
I'll have to read. I don't... You're much better at making off without a script. Ms. Duffel, as Ms. Towes said, has years of experience and knowledge in special education. She has a strong background in autism and obviously behavior. She's a wealth of knowledge and does her job so well. She knows the importance of relationships, high expectations. And just like any good teacher, she knows how to use data to inform her instruction. She also does a phenomenal job of training the staff in her program, which is where Ms. Heather comes in. The two of them have been a tremendous support to all of our school and our students. They have given all of our staff a toolbox full of resources and strategies and supports for how to help our most challenging students. So, if you know either of them at all, you know that they're passionate about serving those students and their families and their staff. And we're blessed to have their program at Grand Oaks. We have a running saying at our school that we don't ever wanna go back to the pre-Duffel days. We count it a privilege to learn from them every day.
Well, and I think the beauty of the Diagnostic Program is our students stay in their elementary schools. We have far fewer elementary students that go to Clinch River now because of these diagnostic programs. We get to keep the students in the elementary schools. And it's because of staff like Ms. Duffel and the diagnostic staff in the elementary schools that we have. So, thank you all for allowing us to do that.
And you have them at...
Lake City, Fairview, Claxton and Grand Oaks. And it serves all of our elementary schools.
Y'all wanna say something?
Come on.
Just go hand planned on it. I'm much more comfortable in front of kids.
Well, then, you oughta be riding.
Heather? So, come here. So, the reason why Heather came with me is because I didn't just build this program myself and I wanted to be able to recognize Heather. Educational assistance are the backbone of what we do. And Heather has been by my side since my second year. So, four years? Four years together. A tremendous help to me. She understands behavior and building relationships. And I tell her all the time how absolutely amazing she is. But I wanted to tell her in front of Dr. Parrott and everybody else, I could not run this program without you. And you're amazing. Thank you. The other thing that I wanna say, they talked about the program. But these two women, and I would joke around because I say good things about Mrs. Knatsir when she's in front of me, but also when she's not in front of me. So, but starting with Mrs. Knatsir. One of the reasons why this program really works at Grand Oaks, it starts from the top down. I would not be able to do my job if I didn't have her support. I know that she trusts me to do what it is that I need to do. If I need support, then I go into her office and I ask for it and I'll get it. I also know the kind of school that she has and the expectations for teachers, how we treat each other, how we treat our kids. And to work in an environment that is so student focused, so family oriented. I've worked in a couple of different states and different programs. And never in my life have I had an administrator who supports their teachers the way that she does. Like, it's phenomenal and I'm just very appreciative of this opportunity that you gave me. And there's no other place I will ever go. So, don't ever ask. And then, of course, Mrs. Towes. I don't know if she remembers, but in my interview, she had said to me, she said, "You're not gonna have too big of a caseload because if you just change one child's life..." Do you remember this? She said, "If you just change one child's life, then you've done your job." And I thought, yeah, right, I'm gonna have a caseload of 20. Because that's, you know, where special ed teachers are always very overwhelmed and we have high caseloads. She wasn't kidding. We have the support of central office. If I need anything, I can call Alex or I can call, you know, Mrs. Towes and we can, you know, talk about it. But the way that they've... She's designated this program and not overwhelmed and really let us focus on our kids that need it the most. When I think about my babies and I think about them being in class and working and being on the playground with their friends and learning how to regulate. If it wasn't for this program, they wouldn't be at our school. And so, thank you for giving me the opportunity and trusting that we could do it because every day is just amazing. And there are times when I feel like I'm drowning, but for the most part, you know, I am able to really focus individually on students who don't have a voice a lot of the time. And I'm able to give them a voice and just see amazing things. So, thank you guys for doing this program and for supporting Diagnostic and, you know, every student every day.
See it?
Thank you.
It's North Stiger, the Paul Steves.
They... Well, and I think that is what is so great about this program is that it does... They teach the kids in their regular environment to say, okay, here's how you can do this. Here's how, instead of just giving up sometimes or acting out, they give them those tools. And you have a whole lot... You get to where there's not a... There's no problem. So, you know, they start out, maybe they're just in the class for one period. By the end of the year, they're in there all the time. And they know if they have a meltdown because we all have meltdowns every now and then. And they understand how to regulate that. It's amazing when you see what they do. Good job. And then, Head Start?
Yes, thank you. I should've sent this so you could see it on the board, but also... This is just a quick data snapshot of what Anderson County Schools preschool looks like, who we're serving, where our locations are. You'll notice at the bottom there mentions disability. So, piggybacking off of this, serving our kids from birth through graduation takes everyone's efforts. And so, I wanted to just give you an idea of where we are for the 2223 school year. We are funded to serve 376 children and their families. And that's both state funded and federally funded. So, we're funded to serve 80 early Head Start. That's pregnant women and children through the age of three. Federally funded for 156 three to five-year-olds. And then, state funded to serve 140 four and five-year-olds. You can see there, our current waitlist is a great need for that infant toddler age group. We have 131 families on our waitlist currently. 50 for the Head Start, aged three to five, and nine for voluntary pre-K. We are serving these children in 24 classrooms throughout Anderson County, all the way from ACC, TC, Briceville and even location in Oak Ridge. Of our population we're serving this year, we have 16.5% who are experiencing homelessness. And with that, it is a high number, 21 early Head Start, 28 Head Start and 13 voluntary pre-K families. Keep in mind that that includes those who are truly homeless, but also includes those living in a shelter, a hotel, a vehicle, or what we call doubling up. So, living with a family member or a friend. And that seems to be a large part of an issue our families are facing. Just the unavailability and the lack of affordable housing in our area. Again, with the disabilities, just as you were presented with a great success story in Anderson County with disabilities. We have a nice partnership with the special ed program. 10.9% of our total enrollment are children who have a diagnosed disability. The largest portion in early Head Start, 20% of that, of those 80 children have a documented disability. So, we know early intervention is key. And then, the last little data point here is English language learners. We're serving 13 children and their families who are English language learners. Those languages are Gujarati, Spanish, Mandarin, Dari and Pashto. So, lots of... We're seeing a slight increase in that population as well. So, I appreciate you giving us the time to present and for all of your support. You have any questions?
What do you do with the homeless?
So, we work with community partners to make, you know, referrals for... Sometimes it's a... It is a lack of funding. So, if we are able to provide funding to secure housing, the largest issue right now is the lack... There's just not available affordable housing. We have families who have vouchers for housing. We just can't find the... Housing is full. So, we're just... It is a troublesome issue in our area. We have lots of community partners who will pay for hotel stays. We do have some shelter areas and that sort of thing. So, we try to make sure everyone has true shelter and not truly homeless or in a car. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the dinner.
Yes, still enjoying that.
Taking a bite right now.
If I don't step on it before the meeting's over, I'm gonna fall into it.
Oh, there's cocoa.
All right. I don't think we have guests here tonight. We're all guests, right? We have the same quality crowd as always. No one registered as a person to be heard? So, I assume there's nobody here to be heard on an item, not on the agenda? All right. Next item is the approval of the consent agenda. I have to confess that I got a tongue lashing from the... Not a tongue lashing. We had a very good discussion with the TSBA law people over whether a consent... The approval of consent agenda needs a motion or not. And although I still think I'm correct that you can approve it by consent, they were under the impression that we would always be better off getting a vote, taking a vote on every item. So, we will have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Even though the items on the consent agenda are consensual, the agenda in and of itself does need a motion. So...
I actually agree with you on this because I get included in those conversations and it is a split and I think you're right.
Yeah, well, so... So, the question is, is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Move we approve the consent agenda?
I got a second and a... Okay, there you go.
Oh, I was thinking you... Okay, go ahead.
No, I didn't make the motion.
Sorry.
Sorry, okay.
I'll do second.
So, there's the motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is done. Oh, I didn't... I missed the real agenda. I was so excited about that one. I need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Second.
The motion is saying to approve the agenda as you have it in front of you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. All right. Now, the executive approval. The only thing we have is the contract that you have in front of you with Life Development Center.
A move that we approve?
Second.
Motion, second, approve this contract. Any other discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. That is done. The only comments I have is a reminder, we're going to the Tennessee School Board Association Convention and Leadership Conference this weekend in Nashville. So, I don't know who all is going, but if you're going, you know who you are. Pam gave us a schedule in front of us and all our hotel room stuff. Thank you, always very efficient. You... Your TSBA journal and probably an email or two also has all the schedules. And the journal has all the workshop leaders and that kinda stuff in it too. So, know what you wanna do before you get there because it gets a little overwhelming. You all know that. We do have the delegate assembly on Saturday afternoon, 2:30. The delegate assembly is just that. It's the... Each school system in the state gets to send delegates to the assembly where we vote our officers in. But the most important thing is we decide what our legislative agenda is gonna be for the year as the School Board Association. So, based on the size of our school, we get four delegates to that assembly. Are there four volunteers who will be there Saturday afternoon who are willing to do that?
Tired.
All right. Glenda then? Joe, you get him? You're not there?
I've done it past three years. I think it's time for somebody else to step up.
I think you're experienced.
I think somebody else needs to step up for the light.
There won't be anybody there. Will you be there, Andy? Andy will be there. I'll be there. I'm glad to do it. Can I just leave?
Is nobody else going?
Dr. Roy, you wanna be there? Dawn's not gonna be there?
The Dawn's not coming. Who you gonna be there, though? You coming to Nashville?
Yeah. You're being asked to serve, Teresa. It should be an honor. Step up and accept it with grace.
Okay.
So, our delegates are Glenda, Andy, Teresa and me.
I make a motion Teresa's lifetime appointee.
She likes it so well. All right. Oh, thank you. Look at our new chairs. Appreciate those. Stay away.
They're pretty good.
They only have two buttons on them.
The arms are turned the right way. They're not cockeyed.
Yeah, there you go. All right. That's all from the chair. Comments from the student board members? I'll roll the dice to see who goes first.
All right. So, AC, clubs are doing Feed a Family, Toys for Tots and also Angel Tree. We're doing a winter wonderland like craft sale and all the profits from that go to the Angel Tree. And then, seniors are also doing cap and gown stuff right now. So, we actually had a meeting today about the information on it. And then, the 15th, we have to do the ordering of it. And then, there's also a practice ACT November 12th. And then, scholarships and Fast Foot is also open. So, seniors are starting to do all of that. And then, for sports, our football team is still undefeated. We have moved on from round one in the playoffs. And then, cross country went to the state championships. Girls finished sixth and boys finished 10th overall. We also recognize seniors, our football game senior night. Our swim team made it to second place in the finalist swim meet. And then, that is all.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So, at Clinton High School, we had our National Honor Society induction October 20th. And we have over 50 new members, which brings our total to, I believe, 106 members in the National Honor Society. And like Cory said, the Fast Foot and scholarship workshops have like opened up. And there's been a bunch of opportunities for students to come in and like get help with those. And I think today was the first day that you can like register for your spring dual enrollment classes. So, juniors and seniors can go during lunch and then register for those. And Clinton High School has added a blessing box. And it accepts like food donations for families in need. And the last ACT that colleges will consider scores from is December 10th. And for some sports stuff, the construction on the new softball field is at a halt and will like... It'll be determined if we can resume in February. And basketball season is starting, I believe, next week, which I'm very excited about. The swim team kicked off their season November 3rd against Grace Christian in Rockwood. And we're... We had a big Orange Madness November 4th to like meet the Dragons and kick off like our basketball season. And then, wrestling began November 5th and we played Halls. And the soccer team is having signups. That's it.
Thank you.
Appreciate those reports. Y'all do a great job. Nice to know what's going on. Ms. Parrott, you got it?
Yes, yes. First of all, I wanna say thank you for the resolution. And I need to publicly thank the staff that work with me, not for me. We all work together. And sometimes I think I work for them more than they work for me. But I think we all have one heart for every student every day. And they're passionate about it. They work 24/7. I was in here yesterday working on some stuff. And you never know who's gonna walk through the door because they're in and out all the time. But they do an amazing job and I thank the board for recognizing them and with the U Trust. Another thing is the legislators voted last year to require STEM education in K-12. And we've been doing it in some in our middle schools, a lot in our high schools, but not really a lot in our elementary schools. And we have an amazing program at Lake City Elementary School. Rebecca Bozeman is the standard for the county. And she has went out and got all these grants and these kids are building robots. They're doing the virtual reality. They have 3D printers and they have all of these things. And tomorrow, all the other technology teachers in our elementary school, they're going to Lake City Elementary School to learn more about this. And one thing that, when I talk to her, and one thing that I think we need is... We need a way for our elementary STEM teachers to be able to write a grant for... To get some of this equipment. And it may be that it's different from each school. So, what I would like to ask if it's okay with the board is that me and Julie try to find maybe $15,000. And that way, each of our elementary schools can write a $1,500 to $2,000 grant to get this project started. And that's one of the things I would like to talk about maybe at our board retreat is maybe really funding that next year and say, hey, we really want you to be able to do this. But this will get the... There is some grants with the Education Foundation, but I think sometimes it... You know, if we start the ball rolling, it can really do that. And I think that kids get excited about it. My grandson, he loves virtual reality. And I got to use it for the first time during vacation. And it will scare you to death how realistic it is. When you pet animals and you do things, it just... It is amazing. And so, along with that, we had a presentation about a month ago that... About racing drones. And really wanna look... really want to look at that for our students that are not into athletics side, but they really want to be in a e-sport, to really get that started, and you can do it, uh, very, it, it's not, it's not really cheap, but it, it's, it's manageable to do that, and we could have teams, and, and Wade and his group are really involved in that, so those are some things we really want to talk about. So, Doug, just a nod of the head will be okay if I can get that money, if that's good. As, as Reagan said, the lawsuit, we did have some, uh, bad news the other day, that they're, they, they delayed the lawsuit until February, or until they get the, uh, the minutes approved, which we could not figure out why the minutes weren't approved, usually, just like you all did tonight, when you approved the agenda and you approved everything, it proved the minutes for the last meeting, it's a technicality that their lawyer figured out. So, we're hoping to get that really fast. They have said that we need to meet and talk about, uh, if we can come to any conclusions. The conclusion I have is, we can't turn a field a hundred and eighty degrees, it won't be right for the kids, it won't be safe for the kids, and we want to do something that is right for them. We did have over the weekend that evidently him and his lawyer were out there measuring things, so I don't know, I give them the, uh, a certified plot plan and the certified survey from, uh, Alex McGrew, so.
Didn't the judge require them to put up a bond?
They did, put up a fifty thousand dollar bond, so.
So, what?
What does that mean?
If, because the reason this was stopped was literally just a stamp, like in our situation, Scott, Dr. Barrett, Pam could have approved the minutes, it's, it's a nothing. And oddly enough, they started, they quit approving the minutes when all of this lawsuit came about. So, the judge said, and they could literally come back at their next meeting and approve all three of them, or the city manager could do it on his own volition, so the judge put a bond up that says that the guy that's not letting these girls play softball is going to be liable for all of the cost that the school system has. Let's say if material goes up or labor goes up that we have to pay, that's going to come out of his pocket. So, now he has some skin in the game, as opposed to just playing fun and saying, I'm not going to let these kids play ball. The judge has said, okay, you can play fun, but if you lose, you're going to have to pay the cost to the school system for the delay. Now, that doesn't help those, those kids, but at least it puts him in a position now to where he can't just make a joke of this and, and keep those little girls from playing sports.
Well, see, I thought that, I mean, my first reaction is when she, when she said something about not having the documents, I was like, fire those attorneys, they don't have what they're supposed to have, but when I talked to Dale, he's like, no, 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 that's not the case.
Yeah, we had everything, we had no idea that it was Clinton City that had, didn't have those approved, so.
Literally, it's just a, the minutes that we vote to approve, all that they would have had to have done is either approve them or had their city manager or city mayor just say, I approved the minutes of that meeting, and for some reason, they did not get approved in the three months that this was discussed.
I thought that two of them were approved and one's not, and they used the term certified, they were not saying approved, they were using the term certified.
It's the same thing, the certification is when we vote on, like when Scott says, do we approve the meetings, that's the certification of the minutes.
That's what they were saying, and we had two that were and one was not, and at that run.
And then Scott or Tim signs them.
And they hadn't turned any of them into Nikki, I mean, to Chancellor of the County.
Yeah, and so, that's why they've now, I mean, because it's, I mean, it's one thing, I, and I don't mean to get upset about this, but I don't like it when people use the legal system for no purpose other than a delay. This is a lawsuit that he cannot win. There is nobody that would say he cannot win, his attorney would admit, he cannot win this lawsuit, it is a delay tactic. And I think that the judge recognizes it for what it is, and says, okay, that's why you're put, because it is extremely unusual to be required to put up a bond as an individual, and they're saying, you can play the game, but now, if you lose your game, you're going to pay any cost that the school has. Now, that doesn't help those girls that need to be able to play their volleyball season, but there should be somebody that, that steps up, and, or softball, there should be somebody that steps up and just mans up to the plate and says, look, drop it, let's let these girls play.
Yeah.
The, the other thing is, we had a, uh, ESG is, will be finishing up this month with the, the four point three million dollar, uh, energy upgrades and everything, the only, the, really, the major thing we still like is the brick at Norris Elementary School. One of the things they also did is they had a group come in and do a safety audit of our two high schools, and, and we had a meeting on it about a week and a half ago, and really and truly, there's some things we need to do to, to make it better, but overall, our score was, was it Mr. Dillon, it was in, it was in the fifty-seven, fifty-eight?
I think it was in the sixties.
Sixties.
One school was a sixty-five and one was, no, one was sixty-two, one was sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, yeah, and, and he said the best that he's ever done was, like, in the low seventies.
Seventy-seven was sixty-seven.
And so, uh, that, that is, uh, really, uh, a good thing with us about trying to do that and trying to make it more safe, I guess that would be the thing. So, there are some things we can do, but I think upgrading of the lights, the upgrading of the cameras, our door systems, things that we've already put in place that y'all had a party in, so that was a, a good, good meeting. The other thing, they have poured the concrete for the slab at Norris Middle School, they were supposed to start laying brick block today, but because of the rain, I'd say they put it off, so hopefully, we'll have block before the end of the week, still on schedule for that. The, the other thing is, the purchase on the house at Clinton High School has been completed, uh, we've got to, uh, they've got about a week and a half for a company to come in and sell all of his tools and things like that, so after that, we'll be able to take that down. The other thing that I would ask the board to approve, uh, tonight, is the purchase of a house beside of Andersonville Elementary School, there is a brick home beside of it, and, and we've been needing that piece of property for years, it is just, uh, we cover that house up when we go in to drop kids off, and the law gets called, and it's a, really a safety hazard, and it, once we purchase this property on that corner, it will really open up to put more parking at Andersonville, so, uh, that is a, we, we've not had a formal, I've, I've had a, a handshake and about two hundred thousand dollars for that piece of property, but to the school, it is worth a whole lot more than that to get rid of that safety problem.
It opens the whole back area of the, the playground for the kids, yeah.
Where would the funds come from?
They will come out undesignated. Yeah, and we do, that's good, we do have the funds in there to do that.
Yeah.
So.
Do we need a motion for that?
We would need a motion for that.
It's in the budget committee.
Yeah, and I don't know if you need a separate one, that, if you, you really need a, you need a, the, approve the transfer, which you probably need to prove.
We probably need a motion to, to purchase and, and do the funding, so.
We'll all sell both.
There's a motion to purchase the property and house at Andersonville Elementary.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor to say aye? Aye. Oppose, no? That is done, anything else, Dr. Barrett?
That is all I have.
All right. Committee reports, budget?
Budget committee met a little earlier, and we have appropriations, one A through one I, Dr. Barrett, you want to go through those quickly?
I can. Uh, one, one A is to approve funds for school improvement projects, capital projects, three hundred thousand dollars. One B is the general purpose school fund to appropriate funds for safety equipment, this is to replace cameras, and it's also to pay for increased legal fees that we've inquired. The next one is to appropriate funds for additional custodial supplies, we talked about that earlier in our committee meeting, how things have just went up, this should really and truly get us through the year. Flu season started early this year, so we need cleaning and everything like that. Those are three, A, B, and C are out of general fund. D, E, and F is out of the federal grant, uh, D is to appropriate the twenty-two, twenty-three vocational rehab grant of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. One E is to appropriate the Tennessee All Core Grant, that's a tutoring grant of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. One F is the federal grant to approve the Resilience School Community Grant for a hundred and seventeen thousand, four oh four ninety-three. One G is to, uh, the Central Cafeteria Fund to approve fund equity for food service equipment and other needs at five ninety-four, five sixty-nine, and as I said, that fund balance is really healthy, and we needed to get these things ordered because their equipment's eight to nine to twelve months out. The one H is to appropriate, appropriate, uh, Food City Rebate, a hundred dollars, and one I is to appropriate funds from surplus sale, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, and then there is one more, is Addendum.
Addendum one.
Addendum one, which is the general purpose, what you all approved tonight is appropriate the funds to purchase the property at Andersonville Elementary School, two hundred and seven thousand dollars.
You've heard the appropriations, and I make a motion we approve those.
Second. Any other discussions? Good thing we passed that motion by the property.
Yes, yes.
All in favor say aye?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call move, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gillenwater?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Langenberg? Mr. McCamy?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Pearl? Pam, you did get who seconded that, didn't you?
I'm sorry.
I didn't know who seconded that.
Dr. Pearl. Yeah, I was a little quiet.
Next thing on the budget committee was the transfers. Dr. Barrett, you want to go a little quicker?
I will. Transfers, one A is Preschool, these are all federal, to transfer funds to cover account shortages, five hundred dollars. Uh, one B is to transfer funds to cover salary and school supply, I mean, supply needs, forty-four thousand, nine eighty-one, seventy-one. Two C is to transfer funds to cover salary and school, I won't say school supplies, supply needs, ten thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, one D is Head Start USDA to transfer funds to cover equipment, three thousand dollars, and one E is Head Start, that's the Kears ARP grant, is to transfer fund for updating playground equipment, eleven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
All right, that's the motion from the budget committee, they're second, is that what I heard, okay.
A second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, transfers, two A through two E, say aye?
Aye.
All right, oppose, no?
That's all.
That's done, thank you, Andy. Next is policy, you want to, we just going to do it, we just, we've never deleted policies before, I don't.
We have.
Have we, I mean, it's kind of, we always just.
We never had COVID before.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
The first one is the, uh, it is the COVID policy, five point three oh five one, and thank goodness we're all past that, so, uh, I don't know if I need a motion to delete it or not, but I'll make a motion that we delete the five point three oh one FF-CRA policy.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion, deleting policy, five point three zero five one?
These do not need a second reading.
Right, yeah, okay. All in favor to say aye? Aye. Oppose, no?
And then I have another one, four point six oh five one, that's graduation requirements, you probably don't have that on there, Dr. Barrett.
I don't have that one on there, too.
And we deleted that back in June, but it just never did get on the board agenda, so I will make a motion that we delete four point six oh five one, graduation requirements.
Second.
Motion is second to delete board policy four point six oh five one. Any questions about that or discussion?
Just deleted everything.
The reason it was, I can tell you why it was deleted, it was deleted because it was pertaining to early graduations, and that was incorporated in the revised four point six oh five policy.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose, no? That's done.
That's all the policy.
Thank you. Joe? Dawn, do you have, you didn't have any action?
Yeah, I've got just something to read off.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the Building and Grounds Committee met a little bit earlier, and, uh, about the building, about the land we have on Edgemore out there. Building and Grounds Committee met earlier this evening to review long-range plans for the Life Development Center property off Edgemore Road at Claxton. School employee Quentin Smith lives there and now patrols the property and the grounds and gates and locks and maintains all the property. The property is considered too valuable to make a quick decision on, so the board will take it up at a board retreat this February, and no action was taken at the meeting. That's all.
Thank you, Dawn.
Moving on to action items, state compliance plan, that, that is a, we have to, uh, schools have to do a checklist every year about that we're in compliance with all federal laws and everything, it's just something y'all have to approve every year, we turn it in.
It's pretty detailed, isn't it?
We are, we are in compliance.
I was going to say, are we?
We are in compliance with everything, except we do have some teachers that don't have teaching license, and that is, uh, they are on waivers, and it takes about six to nine months for them to ever answer anything at the state anymore.
All right, so do we, we need a motion to approve the state compliance plan?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion in? Second. Any discussion, other questions? Not all in favor to say aye? Aye. Oppose, no? That is done. The, uh, school calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four, nothing like being a head, right?
See, that's right. People, people want to make sure they know when fall break is and spring break. There, there are some things on here, the, the ed assistance, we've got to go back and, and really look and see where those are worked, but the days on the calendar and everything else is, is set. We do start a little bit earlier, July twenty-fourth, it's about a week earlier than last year, but the reason being is about every four or five years, it's just the way the calendar falls, and you got to get, you got to get ninety days, we got eighty-nine days in first semester, you got to have that for the high schools to get enough room to get their testing in, so.
Do we, and this is probably a silly question to, to ask, but on the ed assistance, they're not required to do any continuing ed. So, I know that at some of the bigger schools, we have times where there's a, a question as to whether they come, like tomorrow, like tomorrow's election day, there's no students, technically, there's no reason for an educational assistant really to be there.
Well, they're, they're working tomorrow because we're working on trying to get, uh, trying to stay in compliance with the law, because we've got to get all of our library books coded.
Right, but I mean, but it, but, I mean, do we have any sort of consistent plan that says this is a, a day they have to come, this is a day they don't?
That's what, that's what we're going to work on, and, and figure that one out with the instructional team and they, and put it on there, because there are some days that they, like you say, there's some days that we want them to work, like the days coming back after, uh, after New Year's.
Sure.
You know, that's a day they really need to work, come in, get everything, but there may be some days like, like you, you would say is, uh, on an in-service day where we're just working with math teachers and these things, there's no need for them to come, yeah. They're on a hundred and ninety-four day contract, teachers will be on a two oh four day contract, so there's about ten extra days there that they don't work.
Yeah, because I think that's the question I get asked a lot, is, is, and some of the principals say they don't, you know, it's kind of a hit or a miss, kind of like what you said, and I think we should just set out a policy that they, nobody comes this day, or.
What we will do is, we will, we will, when we do, like, the, uh, in May, when we, right after, right, right after we have the board retreat in April, you know, we set the board meetings for the next month and every, next year, and holidays and all that stuff, and we'll set that at the same time.
Okay.
That way, we'll, everybody will know.
I put, move, we approve the calendar.
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you.
You got to have a calendar.
It's a school calendar. Any other questions? If not, all in favor approving the school calendar for school year twenty-three, twenty-four, say aye? Aye. Oppose, no? Last item we've already taken care of, that was, those are the graduation requirements, anything else to come forward, the board? Thanks to everybody for accommodating our schedule, we'll all, most of us will be in Nashville Thursday, so we threw everything on tonight, so thank you all for accommodating us, and.
I'm sure they, I'm sure if y'all want to come Thursday, we'll have the door open.
Do something fun on Thursday night, we'll be in there. We'll be in there.
I don't know where she's going.
I don't know, I don't know.
That's the minutes, that's your, your side of the minutes.
It's soft. That's been trying to fit in.
Let's talk trash because we are so tired of being tossed out onto our beautiful Tennessee roadways. It hurts and it's UGLY. Come on, join the movement at nobodytrashesTennessee.com. Brought to you by the Tennessee Department of Transportation.
Saving lives means staying informed. Knowing the dangers of using counterfeit prescription pills can help those you care about and keep our community safe. As a parent, educator, neighbor, or friend, we all play a role in building safe and healthy futures for ourselves and our loved ones. Do your part. Take the first step today. Visit getsmartaboutdrugs.com to access education, prevention, and treatment resources. Counterfeit prescription pills laced with fentanyl are deadly. Be their protector, be informed. Visit getsmartaboutdrugs.com.
Environmental protections and the consequences of litter are issues all states face. Nearly all litter ends up harming our environment, water supply, and communities.
Nobody Trashes Tennessee is the state of Tennessee's litter prevention campaign. It was birthed out of the Tennessee Department of Transportation's desire to create a litter prevention campaign focused on state pride. There are two different types of litter. There's intentional litter and unintentional litter. Intentional litter is when someone throws something out of a window. Unintentional litter is caused by debris out of a truck bed or a car accident and debris is left behind.
Litter is really relevant for two reasons. One, there is a lot of littering going on. There's a lot of litter out there and it really adds up. At any given time in Tennessee, there's 100 million pieces of litter on roadsides. And the Tennessee Department of Transportation spends $19 million annually picking up litter and educating the public. Additionally, as it moves, it's going to weather, it's going to degrade. So one piece of litter could very easily become seven, eight, nine, 10 pieces of litter. That all impacts a community's water quality, not just aesthetics.
Roadside litter is a major contributor to pollution that is often overlooked. Littering is an easy habit to slip into and a simple habit to fix. Responsible waste disposal and getting involved in your local community can positively impact the environment.
Roadside litter on the river is significant. 80% of what's in the water was originally littered on land. And so every time it rains, every time we have wind blowing really hard, we're having litter get washed into our river. And that's significant because it's people coming to fish, to paddle, to just be on the water simply because it's gorgeous. So when we have litter in our waterways, it not only impacts our ecosystem, it's also affecting our economy.
Littering is more of an issue these days than it has been in the past due to items being made more cheaply and made to be disposable. So it actually provides an opportunity for those items to find their way along the roadways. Simple practices to curb littering would be to refuse disposable items such as straws and plastic utensils, plastic bags at the grocery store, take those reusable bags to the grocery store, anything that's reduced reuse and repurposed.
The state of Tennessee is committed to fighting pollution. Nobody Trashes Tennessee is the statewide litter prevention campaign designed to make a global impact.
The Tennessee Department of Transportation is excited to relaunch our litter prevention campaign, Nobody Trashes Tennessee. As a part of the launch, we are reinvigorating efforts with our county partners and Keep Tennessee Beautiful affiliates such as the Keep Tennessee River Beautiful. We are also adding new initiatives with sport teams across the state and with the Tennessee Aquarium.
Litter prevention is really about two things, education and enforcement. What you're really trying to do is have the public to be aware of the act of littering, give them a chance to correct littering behavior, and make sure that they're aware of the wide-ranging impacts of litter. On the enforcement side, communities that have strong litter prevention, litter enforcement, they're going to have less litter in their community, they're also going to have less illegal dump sites in their community, they're going to have stronger enforcement of their covered load laws.
Correcting litter behavior starts with education and getting individuals involved in local efforts. It's imperative that communities work together and do their part to protect the planet.
Well, we just had a wonderful cleanup today, the Rome County River Cleanup. And we partnered with a lot of organizations and it really does take a village. And we actually had so much momentum in a site we never held a cleanup before. We had to close registration. There was so much energy around this cleanup. And we're going to be pulling out probably 7,000 to 8,000 pounds of trash today, just in a few hours. And so it's really empowering for these volunteers to get to see what they can do and the power that they have to make a difference in one hour even. And so, you know, our hope is that we will not continue to be doing these cleanups forever. We do not consider ourselves the custodians of the river. We want to take people out there. We hope this is an educational experience. We have a slogan with Keep the Tennessee River Beautiful and it's "Your river, your impact." And it really is just that. Whatever you put into that river is what you're going to get back. This is our water source. It's really important for people to get educated about the consequences and how this really does impact our whole community.
The Tennessee Department of Transportation Adopt a Highway is an excellent example of how an individual can do something that would make a difference in their community. The beauty of that program is not only do they provide a sign, give them recognition, they also provide the supplies that are needed in order to do the cleanup.
If you know me and you follow my career since I've been in the NBA, ever since I've gone in, I've been about the community. And with this T-Daw program, Nobody Trashes Tennessee, I'm all for it because I hate litter myself. I've always hated litter. I've always, wherever I've been, if I've seen a trash on the ground or whatever, I'll pick it up and put it in the trash. So I'm big on that and I believe in this campaign.
Keep Tennessee Beautiful's mission is to educate and inspire people to take action every day to improve and beautify their community environments. And we do that through three Es: education, engagement, and enforcement, with enforcement being the last resort. Because we're hoping by carrying out our mission and educating people that it will inspire them to change their behavior, take one action to do something to make their community and their state beautiful.
To learn more, contact us today.